Thank you sir.
Thank you, thank you. The Life Divine file vatharkaha, the vaipinai namakkum, keerpaduthikku duthu, na manivariyum, kunraha intha nairathil onruguodu sayidu, intha, ariyatharunaththi namakkum alitha Bhagavanakkum, Sri Anneikkum, namada nanriyayum vanakkatiyum therivitthukollum. Na minga sindikkum overe yennaththiyum, pesham overe vaaththiyyum, avirigalakku, kaanikiyaga sambar kippom. Hanivarekam, maali vanakkam. Life Divine, chapter eighteen, pathtrukkam. Poonasession varikkam, paragraph, sixteen varikkam paththo. Intha sessionla ondhu, intha, paragraph seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, idhumaonram, tha last paragraphs, intha chapter nodiya, last three paragraphs, idheenam paakala. Adhuk munnadi naam enna paththo, poonavaraam enna paththo, abdinga raada. Nambavondhu, or surukkama oru briefanam ondhu ninneevukorala. The manathinoodiya, seyalvathai, Bhagavan kuripittu, epriyath manathinoodiya, manathinoodiya seyalvadu, ekaranathinala aduvandhu, andha oru, oru kurayulla seyalvadaha namakkuttherichinradu. Een aduvandhu, the pahuttaraaydal, adhanoodiya, the pahuttaraayam, andha, amsam edhanala eyarpattadu. Aneththiyum perithupathu, pahudiyai maathiram gavannathil eduththukundu, murumayai adu thavaravedikinradu. Idhala manathinoodiya amsangel, adhanala manathirkkondhu, the holistic perception of truth, adukkadiyadu. Unmayayondhu murumiyaha, manathu ariyamudiyadu. Adharal manathu vandhu, adu enthanileyilum, harindukundadu aniththame, pahudi than, murumayala. Idhadaan unmai. Intha unmai daan Bhagavan, intha chapter nodiya, oru mayyakaruthaha, vilakkainrar. Intha manathinoodiya gunam, evaar eyarpattadu. Enral, intha manathinoodiya, intha, pahuttaraayam gunam, division and analysis. Idhuvandhu manathu, idhuvandhu manathu, manathin seyalvaththi kaha, eyarpaduthappatta onrui endhu Bhagavan koorikinrar. Enenral, manam enbadu, adhanoodiya thootram, engirundhu varikinradu enral, supermind. Supermind than, aniththakum, moolekaranamaha irikkinradu. Supermind nodiya, supermind than ondhu, intha ulagathil, creation, srishthi idhaya eyarpaduthikinradu. Adhalal manam enbadum, the supermind adimanathinala, thootrekkappatta oramayipthan. Appadirikkum porudhu, intha, supermind vandhu, truth consciousness, supermind adimanam, idhuvadu, intha, thootrangalai eyarpaduthikinradu, enbadu koorukail, Bhagavan ennakoorikinralenrar. Andha adimanathin, nilayhel, moonruvidhamaha uldana, andha moonra, moonruvidhamana nilayhel, intha kadaisi nilayana, intha, apprehending consciousness. Adhan moolemaha than, intha, vadivangal thootrangal, inga eyarpaduthapadikinthan. Adhanoodiya, supermind than, aniththakame, sachchidanandaavandhu, anantamana onrui, adhanoodiya sachchidanandaavinoodiya adippayamsam, orumai. Orumaiyilirundhu panmukhatanmai, edhu eyarpaduthikinradu enral, panmukhatanmai enbadu, naam ulagathil kaanakkoodi, andha mastiphticity. Edhu vandhu, orumaitanmaiyilirundhu, panmukhatanmaiye eyarpaduthikinradu enral, endha sakthi, sachchidanandaavin orumaitanmaiye, panmukhatanmaiya velipaduthikinradu enral, the supermind than. Supermindalio, adhanoodiya, nilayhel vandhu, moonru nilayhelaa irikkinthan. Onrui sachchidanandaaviyay oddiya, andha orumaitanmai, first status, adhadaan comprehending status. Irandavathu, moonraavathu nilayhel, moonraavathu, irandavathu, moonraavathu nilayhel, apprehending status. Irandavathu nilayhel la vandhu, andha orumaitanmaiyum, panmukhatanmaiyum, than, thanuuliyadakuyulladu, anga panmukhatanmai velipadavillai. The moonraavathu tanmai than, orumaitanmai irikkinradu, panmukhatanmai thani velipaduthikkoolkinradu. Infinite and finite, finite thaniaga thani velipaduthikkoolkinradu. The moonraavathu nilai moolemaha than, aniththu, intha naam ulagathil kaanakkoodi, aniththu manam, udal, vaavu, intha amaypugal eyarpaduthapadikinthan. The manathinoodiya, intha seyalvaththi parkkum porudhu, enna karanathinala manam, seyvaru seyalvadikinradu enrue Bhagavan koorukail, intha moonraavathu nilayilla vandhu, enna nadakkinradu enral, intha orumaitanmaiyanadu, panmukhatanmaiil thani velipaduthikkoolkinradu. Avar velipaduthikkoolkum porudhu, adhanoodiya, andha gavannam, gavanna kovippu, intha concentration, aduvandhu exclusivea, andha thanipattamaypakkolil kovindukolikinradu. Exclusive concentration on finite things, on individual units. The exclusive concentration than vandhu, manathinoodiya, intha, ah, amsam, manathinoodiya, andha perithaalam amsam, perithuparkam amsam, enenral, exclusivea onrui gavannam seluthumbadhu, matravaiyai naam vilakkividikinradu, gavannathilirundhu, parvaiyilirundhu vilakkividikinradu. Intha gunam than, manathinoodiya, seyalvaththi kadiipadiyaha amayikinradu enrue, Bhagavan koorikinrar. Intha, exclusive concentration enbadu, man, een varikinradu enral, adhuvandhu oru, thanney thani marandha nilai, ah, avar eyarpadikinradu. Anaal Bhagavan ennakoorikinrar enral, intha nilail, avar, intha nilaili irkavendi avasiamillai enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Manam vandhu, ah, andha, thanney marandha nilail, thani, thani, thanithu, ah, thanipattan nilail, irkavendi avasiamillai enrue koorikinrar. Aduvandhu, anantamana onrui, adu adayamudiyum. Epurudhu adayamudiyam enral, andha thanney, meelirikkum andha adimanathirkku, andha truth consciousness, adarku, thani tiravaaha vaythukollum porudhu, manam enbadu, intha thanipattamaypilirundhu vilaki, andha, knowledge of whole, andha knowledge of the infinite, idheey adayamudiyam enrue, Bhagavan koorikinrar. Ah, idhale, enna nadakkinradu enral, ah, intha, manathinoodiya amaypavandhu, intha avitya inta sollakkoodiya, the self ignoring knowledge, idhadaan. Self ignoring knowledge ennan, ennavanral, adhadaan vandhu adippayana karanam, adippayana karanam, adhadaan vandhu, ah, andha adimanathilirundhu, intha manathai, perith, perikinradu. Adimanathilirundhu manathai edhu perikinradu enral, andha avitya, ariyamay enginradu, the self ignoring knowledge. Intha gunam than vandhu, ah, manam, manam vandhu thanipattamaypi enginradu, oru yennaththi adu thootrekkinkinradu. Adhalal enna sayikinradu enral, adhum berum vadivangalilum, oru kuripitta edathilum, oru kuripitta nairathilum, time, space, form. Ivayil, oru kuripitta vadivangalulum thanney, aarthikundu, matravakalai adu gavannathil, eduthukolvadu illai. Oru kuripitta kaalam, adhil nadakkum nigirugal, oru kuripitta edam, adhil nadakkum nigirugal, adhi ponru oru kuripitta vadivam. Adhukoorita, adhanoodiya, gavannam. Idhildhaan manathinoodiya, amma, manathinoodiya, andha gavanna kuvippu eyarpadikinradu. Idhinaala enna nadakkinradu enral, adu, machra, andha machra nigirugalio, machra edathil nadakkum nigirugalio, machra vadivangalil nigirugalio, adhil, adu gavannathili eduthukolvadillai. Adhalal adu enna sayikinradu enral, than thanipattamoril kaalam thaniaga, edam thaniaga, vadivangal thaniaga, adhan moolemaha, tahavrittha seyvalgalai, seyharitha tahavalkalai, aduvandhu onrinaika myalkinradu. Oru bit, oru, ellaa, ellaa bittiyam setha, ebde rakuma, adhey palai, aduvandhu onrinaikkinradu. Avar onrinaikkum porudhu, enna nadakkinradu enral, oru murumaitanmai kadaik, kadaik, kadaipadu illai. Adu enna than, adu onrinithaalam, adu murumayai, adayavadu illai. Andha, machruonru, the manathinoodiya, ah, innoramsam ennavanrue, Bhagavan koorikinrar enral, intha apparent stability sinrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Edhu vandhu, sterettharamayaha kaanappadikinthanvo, adhila, adhil than, aduvandhu, gavannam seluthikinradu, anaal, unmaiyilaiyae, avahal, sterathanmai vaandhadu kadiyadu, edhumay stable kadiyadu enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Aniththame, maarikkundey than erikkinthan. Anaal, edhu, thootrathil, oru nilayana tha irukakkoodi edho, adhil thani, heedubaduthikkoolkinradu manam. Adhadaan manathinoodiya, innoramsam enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Maarakoodiya onrui, maarikkundey erikkinradu, adhiga, gavannathil eduththukollamal, maramal, maramal iruppothu bol, thootramalikkum ontrameedha, adu gavanna iruppey seluthikinradu. Anaa unmaiyilai aniththame, maarikinradu, everything is changing, idhadaan unmai. Intha rigidity and fixity, idhadaan manathinoodiya, seyalvaththi, kurikam amsangelaha amayikinthan. Ella timay vandhu oru kuripitta vadivaththukulladu manam, ah, manam amayikinradu. Adhey ponru, ah, thanoodiya, andha mudivikalai, ah, edhannadipadigala amithukolikinradu enral, apparently unchanging and unmovie, external factors, edhuvallam, merepurathothrathirakkum, maramal, maramal, ma, marathathu bol, thootramalikkinraduho, adhey bol, asayathathu bol, thootramalikkinraduho, adhan meedha, adhan, adhan adipadigal than, aduvandhu mudivikalay edikkinradu, anaal, unmaiyilaiyae, aniththame, maarikkundey erikkinthan. Idhadaan unmai. Anaal, intha, ah, manathinoodiya seyalvaththi kai, intha, fixity and rigidity, ivay inriyamayadu, tevey padikinradu. Idhun adipaday eduthakkoodiya mudivikalai, manam enna sayikinradu enral, adhadaan irudiyana mudivu, enra mudivukka adu varikinradu, anaal, unmaiyilaiyae, adu irudiyana mudivu, alai, alai. Adhutthu Bhagavan ennakoorikinrar enral, the manathinoodiya, ariyamayki innorum mukkimana karanam, manam epurudhame, intha udaloodan thani adayala paduthikkoolkinradu. Epurudhame manam enna sayikinradu enral, it is always preoccupied with the body. So, intha udalin, ah, seyalvadukalai, aduvandhu, adhanoodiya, udalin seyalvadukalai vandhu, ah, adhanoodiya seyalvaththi kai, adu, adu ubiyohapaduthikkoolkinradu. Adhalal, enna, ah, evaar vandhu, manam, adhiparkinradu enral, manam, udalinaal teermaanikkeppadikinradu, enginradu yennaththi, adu thootrekkikradu. Enenral, ah, manam enbadu, edhanala aala padikinradu enral, namolaya, ayim pulankalaal, aala padikinradu. Ah, adhan moolemaha than, manam, intha ulagathai parkinradu, intha vaadkei parkinradu. Adhalal, ettakya yennaththi idhuruvaakikinradu enral, manam enbadu, intha udalal aala padikinradu, enginradu yennaththi idhuruvaakikinradu, anaal, idhutthavarayenrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Enenral, manam enbadu, oru thanipattamaypu, adu, thani epurudhame, intha udaloodan sambandappattu, sambandappaduthikkoolvadhal, udai, intha udaloodan thani adayalam kandukolvadhal, ivar, ivakayana yennam thondukinradu. Intha, idhetaan, udaloodan, ah, sambandappattu lena, manathidhan, Bhagavan ennakoorikinrar enral, andha corporeal mind enrue koorikinrar, physical mind abdingrar. The mind vandhu, udaloodan sambandappatta, andha, adhanoodiya pahudiyai, Bhagavan, corporeal mind or physical mind enrue koorikinrar. Aduvandhu, intha udaloodan, adhanoodiya seyalvaththi aniththame, intha udaloodan, seyal, ah, sambandappattadu. Machruonru, idhayum taandiyay oru manathinoodiya nilai, irikkinradu enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar, adhadaan life mind or vital mind. Adu, vaadoodan sambandappattadu. Modalaavathu vandhu, udaloodan sambandappattadu, irandavathu, vaadoodan sambandappattadu. Aduvandhu, udal, arindhalam kodha, adu irkum, inka, aduvandhu nilaythir, aduvandhu, palveer vaavu, vaavu nilayhelai, sutriyadu, amith, thani amithukollam enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Adhanoodiya anubavangal, vevayer vaadkei, thootramtha, adu, needikkum enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Oru udalin thootraththu, thootraththudano, adhanala, oru, andha udalin, arivu, arivudano, oru, adu marayanduvadu illai. Ah, adhalal, Bhagavan ennakoorikinrar, intha life mind enbadu, intha udalai taanti irukakkoodi, seyalvadakkoodiya, oru amaypu, enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Idhadaan life mind enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Ah, intha corporeal mind illa, physical mind, udaloodan sambandappattai, intha panam. Idhuvandhu namrodiya, merepuramanam enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar, surface mind enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. The surface mind than, namboloodiya, anubavangalai, ura vaadkeela, naam sandikkakoodiya, anubavangalai, ah, adhadaan, ah, edirkolkinradu, adhadaan, andha anubavangalai, ah, anubavikkinradu. Intha, merepuramanam, surface mind, adarku pinnal, intha subconscious or subliminal part. Appadu, intha subconscious, andha adimanam, laaavmanam, ivayal ellamay, andha merepuram manathirkku, keel uulle nilayhel enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Intha nilayhel vandhu, udaloodan, sambandappattirundhalam kodha, adhar, adarku meelum, idhanoodiya, amaypu seyalvadikinradu. Aduvandhu, adhanoodiya seyalvadu vandhu, ah, verum, physical levella mathramla, adhanoodiya seyalvadu, subtle action, subtle levella kodha, adhanoodiya seyalvadu amindulladu, adhathu nuunniyathalangalil kodha, intha subconscious or subliminal part, intha, intha, manathin pahudigal nodiya, seyalvadu amindulladu. Ah, idhadaan vandhu, Bhagavan ennakoorikinrar enral, edharka karanamaha amayikinradu enral, namrodiya aaramana, machrum, teeviramana seyalvaththi kana, ah, merepuramanam, merepuramana, andha surface mind, teeviramaga seyalvathalam kodha. Andha teeviramana seyalvaththi kai, pinnal edhu karanamaha amayikinradu enral, intha subconscious mind or subliminal mind, idhadaan karanam enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Intha, life mentality, adhathu, vaadoodan sambandappattam manam vandhu, the, aduvandhu udalai, udalai, udal, udaloodan sambandappadaville, udalir kapathpatte irikkinradu. Adhalal, vandhu udal, udalinaal eyarpadum, intha, pireyhal, error of the body, adhanilirundhu, adu vidupattu irikkinradu, irundhalam kodha, aduvandhu, the manathinaal eyarpadum, pireyhal ilirundhu, vidupattiruppadillai enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. It is still not free from the error of the mind, abline Bhagavan koorikinrar. Aduuum ariyamail than erikkinradu enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. The corp, the surface mind, merepuramanam, aduuum ariyamail than erikkinradu, thani udaloodan sambandappaduthikundu, ariyamail erikkinradu. Adhey ponru, intha vaadoodan, inayindha, intha manamum, aduuum ariyamail than erikkinradu enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Aduuum ariyamailirundhu vidupadavillai. Ah, aduvandhu, aduuum thani, thani, oru thanipattamaypu enrue karidu than, adu seyalvadikinradu enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Kaalathirkum, edathirkum, uppatthan, aduuum seyalvadikinradu enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Ah, aduuum ariyamail than erikkinradu enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Adu, thani evaar, harindukolikinradu enral, movement in time and succession of lives, adhathu, vevayer vaadkei, vevayer vaadkeen thootrachilum, intha kaalathin, ah, ka, ka, kaalathin, sureshchilum, thani harindukolikinradu. Ah, the physical mind vandhu, adhukenna, enna irikkinradu enral, intha udaloodan, thani inaythukundu, andha oru maya, 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 yennathil irikkinradu, illusion. Anaal, intha, subconscious or dynamic mind, the, idhuvandhu, illusion of life. Vaadoodan thonraya, oru maya yennathil adu irikkinradu. Intha, the irandamey vandhu, intha, adimanathinoodanana thooderbai, ivayi arindirkavillai enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Intha subconscious mind erukattum, the life minda erukattum, ivay, ariyamail than erikkinthan, eenavay ariyamail erikkinthan enral, andha adimanathin, supermind, adhanoodanana thooderbai, avay adayavillai. The adimanathin, adimanathinoodanana thooderbai, avay adayadu varikkum, avay ariyamail than erikkinthan, enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Adhutthu irandanelayalai patthi Bhagavan koorikinrar, onrui surface mind, corporeal mind, udaloodan sambandappattadu, aduuum, ariyamail erikkinradu. Adhutthu then, life mind, dynamic mind enrue koorikinrar, so, idhuvandhu, life mind, dynamic mind, subconscious, subliminal mind, idhellaamey, oray, artathil, inga Bhagavan ubiyohapaduthikinradu. Iveyam ariyamail erikkinthan, enenral, ivayam adimanathilirundhu, vidupattu than, seyalvadikithan. Adhutthu oru manathin amaypi Bhagavan kooripadikinradu, adhadaan vandhu, manomaya purusha. Modalil naam paththu vandhu, pranamaya purusha, andha vital mindinga, pranamaya purusha. The pure mind, manomaya purusha enbadu, pure mind, adhadaan vandhu, ah, manathinoodiya, thulliyamana seyalvaththi kka, adhukaranamaha amayikinradu. Aduvandhu, udal, vaavu, idhale, idharkum aparpattadu, seyalvadikinradu. Aduvandhu, yet, adhanoodiya, amay, adhanoodiya seyalvadu, edhan amay, edhanoodiya, edhan adipadigal amayikinradu enral, adhanoodiya sangalpatthin peerilum, adhey ponru, adhanoodiya yennathin peerilum, adhanala, uruvaakakkoodiya sakthiin peerilum, adu, adu seyalvadikinradu. The vaavuyam, udalim, adu, adharkaha than, adu, eyarpaduthikkoolkinradu. Idhadaan vandhu, mental being or manomaya purusha, enrue, ah, enrue arakappadikinradu. Anaal, intha manomaya purusha, intha mental being, idhaye, naam, silasamayam, thavaraaha purindukolikinradu. Evaar thavaraa puruthukolikinradu, purindukolikinradu, enral, the pure spirit. Adhathu, ullirikkum aanma enrue naam thavaraaha purindukolikinradu, enrue Bhagavan kooripadikinradu. Unmaiyilaiyadu, manomaya purusha enbadu, aanma illai, enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Intha, pure mind, the higher mind, idhuvandhu, ah, edhan moolemaha, machra amaypugulana, thooderbukolikinradu enral, purely by mental impacts. Manam sambandappatta, intha, mental impacts, mental contacts, adhanoodiya thooderbin moolemaha than, adu, machra amaypuguloodan, adu thooderbai eyarpaduthikkoolkinradu. Aduvandhu udalai nambiruk, iruppadillai, vaavu nambiruppadillai, adhathu, it, the contact is no more by means of vital and nervous impact and physical indication. Idhierandukam aparpattu, manathoodu, manathu thooderbai eyarpaduthikkoolkinradu. Adu, orumayai, adhuninithaalam kodha, aduvandhu oru mental figure, manathaalavil than, adu orumaitanmaiye, adu, ah, kapitthukolikinradu oru, unmaiyilaiyae, orumaitanmaiye, adu adayavadillai. Orumaitanmai epurudhu adayamudiyam enral, adu thani, adimanathoodan, adayalam kandukundhal than, inaythukundhal than, orumaitanmaiye, adu adayamudiyam. Idhuum, adu adayavillai enrue koorikinral, idhuum, adimanathilirundhu thanithi yengayikinradu, adhalal, idhuma, manathaalavil than, orumai eyarpaduthikinradu oru, andha, unmaiyilaiyae, orumaitanmaiye, adayavadillai enrue, Bhagavan koorikinrar. Ah, idhuum, pirekkuutpattai, idhuis seyalvadikinradu. Thani oru thanitthamaypaha karuthikundu, adu aniththame, edaypoodikinradu, saachyaaha parkinradu. Ah, thanitthamaypaha, thanitthamaypaha, thani karuthinradu varikkum, adu orumaitanmai, adhalal, adayamudiyavadillai. Ah, avar adu orumaitanmai adayavandhim enral, adu thani vaavuylirundum, manathilirundum, thani veduvithukollavendum, veduvithu, tapitthichandra, adhan, adu, andha orumaitanmaiye, adayamudiyam. Manathu, manam enginradu, amaypul, irik, amaypuladu, amaypikkulladu, seyalvadikinradu varikkum. Adhanala, andha orumaitanmaiye, adayamudiyadu enrue, Bhagavan koorikinrar. Adhalal, enna inga Bhagavan koorikinrar enral, intha pure mind, higher mind, idhuum kodha, oru, unmaiin, thootrathithaan, adu, adechinradu oru, unmayana unmaiay, adu adayavadillai enrue Bhagavan koorikinrar. Unmayana unmayadu adayavandhim enral, aduvandhu, andha adimanathurannana, andha, thooderbaiyadu eyarpaduthukollavendum, adimanathirkku tiravaahaththani vaythukundu, thani, adhanoodiya, adhanoodiya aalimayil thani utpattuthikollavendum. Appurudhu than, adu, andha, murumay, andha unmaiye, adu adayamudiyam. Idhu varikkum naam poonavaraam varikkam paththo. Indhararaam meerkundu, intha paragraph seventeen, lendha, naam ulapola number. Sundar sir, padikringla?
Yes sir. Yes sir. Paragraph seventeen. It is only, when the veil is rent, and the divided mind overpowered, silent and passive, to a supplemental action, that mind itself gets back to the truth of things. There, we find a luminous mentality, reflective, obedient, and instrumental to the divine real idea. There, we perceive what the world really is. We know in every way, ourselves in others, and as others, others as ourselves, and all...
Idea of truth consciousness. There we perceive the reality of the world. We know ourselves in others and as others. We know others as ourselves. The Vedantic formula, self in all, all as self, all is in self. We know all as the universal and self multiplied one. The source of all limitation and error is the rigidity of our individual standpoint. We lose this rigidity. The ignorance of mind took all for the truth. But we perceive that they are indeed truth, but they are deflected, mistaken and falsely conceived. We still perceive the division, the individualizing, the atomic creation. But we know the truth and the reality behind this individualization. We do not lose sight of the oneness behind this division.
Thank you. It is only when the veil is rent and the divided mind overpowered, silent and passive to a supplemental action, that mind itself gets back to the truth of things. There we find a luminous mentality reflective, obedient and instrumental to the divine real idea. The veil is rent, that is what we think. That is what we think about our grandmother. The supernatural world and our physical world are connected. The spirit. That is because of one's thought. That is because of the spirit. That is because of the spirit that God is looking for. Otherwise, our physical world, body mind life, that is also the super mind, that is also a way. Only through that we can understand the real truth. We can understand the truth. Then, this important mind, it is, if we want to be there, then you have to keep this inner mind alive. Only when you keep it alive, we can understand the truth. Then, we can see a new light. Reflective, reflective means that we are reflecting. That is one, that is the divine real idea. That is the truth consciousness. That is the, that is the real idea. That is the idea of the spirit. That is the idea of the spirit. If we change our mind, then you have to keep this inner mind alive. The real idea is the super mind truth consciousness. That is the right thing for the spirit. That is why we want to be alive. Because we want to be alive, then we have to keep this inner mind alive. The second one, that is, we can understand the truth. The truth is in the Lord Satchidananda. But we cannot understand the truth now. But when we change our mind, we can understand the truth. Then, in the Vedantic quote, the self in all, all as self, all is in self. We see others, we see ourselves. We see ourselves. Self in all, all as self, all is in self. This is a Vedantic formula. We can understand it. We can experience the truth. Even if we are living alone, the relationship between the two is possible. One can see one. That is one, our, what is the reason for our limitations, our, this is all because, a individual standpoint, that is a question. The rigidity, rigidity of our individual standpoint. This is what we know about a person who does not live. When we change our mind, the rigidity, the rigidness of the mind, we have to remove it. That is one, another God is asking us. We believe that we know what is happening, but we believe that it is true. But what is God asking us? It is true, but it is a matter of thought. Who thinks that it is true? Deflected, mistaken and falsely conceived. A matter of thought is seen. After the thought, we can understand it. The second one, we understand the thought. We understand the thoughts. Even the, the gods of Anavin are thoughts. Even if we are in the thoughts, we can understand it. They say, we are not seeing any thoughts or thoughts. We can understand it. Reality behind this individualization. The omnipresent reality, we saw in the third chapter, fourth chapter. The spirit is there. That is what we will see. That is one, even if we see the thoughts, we will see the thought. What is happening? When we change our mind, we have to remove the thoughts. It is not like this now. Now, we can change our mind. That is because we are the source of it. If we change our mind, it is not seen. Once we change our mind, we have to keep it alive. Why God is asking us? We want to change our mind. We don't need to remove it. We want to change our mind. We want to change our mind. We want to change our mind.
Sir, please. In the first paragraph, there we perceive the reality. But actually, what happened? If we perceive the reality, how do we know others as ourselves? It never happens. This is my doubt.
That is what God is asking us. The rigidity is gone. Once we lose the rigidity of rigidity, we lose the rigidly separate individual standpoint which is the source of all limitation and error. That is what they say. If we have rigidity, we cannot do it. Once we have rigidity, naturally, these words are used. Rigidity is not possible. But once we change our mind, we have to keep it alive.
Then, it is impossible to see ourselves as others.
Yes, that is possible. That is possible. The self in all, the Vedantic formula, how can we experience it? The self in all, all as self, all is in self. This consciousness, we can experience it. When we change our mind, we have to keep it alive. This feeling is present. Until now, it is not present. Until now, it is not present. I am a thought, others are thoughts. The rigid formula, rigidity and flexibility, that is what we have. The rigidity and flexibility, when we can come to it, we have to submit ourselves to the super mind. That is what we have. This oneness is present.
Thank you, sir.
Until now, it is not present.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mama, in the last, three minds, total confusion. Physical mind, then life mind.
First. That is what I am saying. First, we have the body. What is associated with that?
Hmm. That is what God is asking us.
God has said, physical mind. Physical mind is one, corporeal mind is the same meaning. All of them are the mind associated with the body. The second one, the more dynamic and active part of mind. What is dynamic and active part? The subconscious and subliminal part. Why God is asking us? Our surface mind, surface mind, the mind of a person, is the cause of the existence of a spirit. The subconscious mind or subliminal mind. That is what God is asking us. Life mind, vital mind, that is what God is asking us. All of them are categorized.
That is what I heard. Life and vital are the same.
That is what I heard. Subconscious, subliminal, life mind, dynamic, all of them are categorized. That is associated not with your body, but with your life. It does not stop with the birth and death of your body. It continues to several lives. Different words continue.
Oh, okay. And that is what gives you the glimpse of the soul.
Yes, 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 yes. That is what I am saying. That gives you a glimpse of the soul, but not the real soul. It just gives a glimpse. The next one is pure mind, thinking mind, intellectual. Pure mind, thinking mind is the mind of the higher mind.
Ah, that is higher mind. So, there are only three minds. There are only three minds.
This is the basis of the philosophies. The Acharyas, Acharyas are there. Dvaitam, Vishishtadvaitam, Advaitam, all of them are Acharyas. Their mind is the pure mind, higher mind. At the highest level of mind, they are called metaphysical mind. They are philosophers. We have done this. What is important? What is important in the mind? The will, will and thought. The mind's mind, that is what is working. Thought, idea, all of them are working. These three are philosophies. But what is God asking us? They are not in touch with the super mind. That is why various philosophies are there. There is a division. Still, they are subject to the division and error of the mind. In the three levels, the mind is subject to the error and division of the mind. If we want to see it, the mind has to submit itself to the super mind. We have to keep this inner mind alive. We have to keep it alive. That is what you are saying.
Hmm. Now, we have asked, how do we feel that you and me and all are part of the same? And we perceive the world as real. We know in every way ourselves in others and others and as others, others as ourselves and as a universal and self multiplied one. When you talk about this, what is the matrix? Do you know where you are?
I was told that it is here. The matrix, the concept is here.
And when he realizes that the whole world is a matrix, suddenly everybody will see them as connected by one computer screen. Like a nice visualization. So, I just wanted to share.
But when the sense of oneness comes, the mind, the mental level is not present. The super mental level goes up, that is when the oneness appears.
Hmm.
Until now, we are individuals.
Hmm.
We don't see the truth, that is oneness is the truth, but we fail to see the truth. That is the truth.
That is the truth given in the first paragraph. The dividing mind is made passive. How to remove the veil is their interest.
How to remove the veil? You see, it is not possible.
Thank you.
What is the reason? How can we remove the veil? That is what we are asking. Clear? What is the problem? Who is in our mind? There is a gap in the super mind. Who can remove the veil? That is what mother has to do. Because the status of mother is, mother is in the two parts. That is why mother has to remove. That way, only mother can remove. With the help, with the grace, by the grace of the mother only we can do it. Otherwise, not possible. Amma.
Correct, correct.
That is the truth. Say.
Sir, in the book two, counter ten, in the book, Manosakti, three years old. She is a woman who is tired. She is tired and sad. She is 6,000 years old. She is not old enough to know anything. She is tired. She is always burning in the fire. She is tired, she is tired. She is trying to do what she wants. She has been tired for years. She has been tired for years. She is also a spirit. She keeps a spirit. All the diseases, all the diseases, this truth has been passed down. It is not allowed to be managed. It is burned by the thoughts. It is not able to burn. It is not able to burn. It is burned. It is burned. It is not able to burn. It is burned. If it is burned, it is burned. It is burned.
Okay, okay.
This is the end of the stories. The story of the burning spirit. She has been scared by the relationship. She has been scared by the desire. She is not able to burn. She keeps a reason. She keeps a spirit. She is watching the future. She is watching the future.
Okay.
That is the reasoning mind. Clear?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You said it. I saw it. There were many things there, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the book?
That is, the book, Maha Savitri Kavya. Maapu Pandita wrote it. The Savitri, the Tamil. Maha Savitri Kavya. Even if we read the book, we will read it.
Okay.
Which one?
This, Madam, this is the 94th. This is the 9th. The small manosakti, the king.
Sure, sure, sure.
It is full of this.
The goddess and kingdoms and goddess of the mind.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next, we will talk about. The part of explanation.
Say.
Ah, please.
We perceive the mind to be subordinate instrumentation of the truth consciousness. Here, mind fulfills its functions in full light in the truth. It holds forms apart from each other by a phenomenal and formal delimitation of their activity. Yet, behind this delimitation of forms, there is governing universality of being which remains conscious and untouched. But the mind can function like that so long as it is not separated in experience from the enveloping master consciousness, within bracket, truth consciousness. So long as it remains a passive instrument of super mind. So long as it does not keep itself separate and possesses for its own benefit.
The mind is, once in the paragraph, God says, the mind, the super mind, when we change our mind, how is it? When we change our mind, how is it? It is the light in the truth. Now, a light, a light is coming. Then, it is coming. That is one, the separate thoughts, that is why the thoughts and thoughts are there. Even if he is tired, he is not tired. He is not tired. It is the universality of being. This is present. There is a governing universality of being which remains conscious and untouched. Conscious, untouched. Universality, that is, the universality is the universal. Even if we are living alone, the universal is present. It is present. Now, it is not possible. Now, we are living alone. We do not have the universal. But now, it is not present. When we change our mind, if we can change it, what is God asking us? So long as it is not separated in self experience from the enveloping master consciousness and does not try to set up house for itself. That is, enveloping master consciousness is the master consciousness. It is the truth consciousness. Even if we change our mind, it is not present. We can understand the truth. It is possible to change it. Because it is the inner mind, the inner mind, a passive instrument. If we change our mind, it is possible to change it. The second one, we have to change our mind. Until it is present, it is possible to change it. That is what God is asking us. So long as it does not keep itself separate and possess for its own benefit. Until it is present, we change our mind. Then, the universal is present. That is what we are asking. The truth consciousness, the super mind, until we change our mind, we have to be present. Next. Next, you will talk? Explanation.
I will talk.
Yeah, talk.
When the mind acts as a subordinate instrument of the super mind, it has to receive the truth of things from truth consciousness and distribute it according to the unerring perception of universal eye and will. It reminds its actions are governed by the supreme consciousness and supreme will. It has to uphold existence, consciousness and bliss, Satchidananda in the individualization of active consciousness. This individual consciousness derives all its power, reality and joy from the inseparable universality behind. Here, individuality is a part and parcel of universality. There is multiplicity of the one. The mind turns this multiplicity into an apparent division. By this division, the relations are.
Truth in its universal manifestation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, madam. Thank you. Mind is the final operation of the apprehending truth consciousness, which makes all this possible. And what we call the ignorance does not create a new thing and absolute falsehood, but only misrepresents the truth. The manadinodaya, manamandu, uh, yedanodaya irudiyana sayalbada hamigindradhainral, the prajnana andrathotho, apprehending truth consciousness. Supermind andratho, irandavat, mondavat nileyal daavandu, uh, the apprehending truth consciousness. Irandavat nileyalavandu orumaitanmay, panmukuthanmay irukindradhade. Mondavat nileyalavandu complete avandu, and the finite nice tha varadhade. Adhala, the individual avandu thannithani, velipaduthi polikindradhade. And there is an individual concentration. Angavandu orumaitanmay vandu, marindhu vadikindradhade. The mind vandu, final operation of the apprehending truth consciousness. Adhanodaya manadaya irudiyana, the uh, apprehending truth consciousness, adhanodaya irudiyana sayalbada heedu amigindradhainral, manam. Manam than sayalvadikindradhade. Uh, once vandu, and the manam vandu, uh, in the mondavat nileyal, adimanathinodaya sayalvada amindhalam kodha, manam vandu orumatraam arandhavittal, nambar merkkundupathaya aniththamee saathimindra bhavan kodikindral. Ipoyidhavandu, ipoyidhavandu eerpaduthappattai thoitrungalakko, and the apprehending truth consciousness, that is the karanam. Irundhalam kodha, namyeyin the unmayalavandu, manamraday manam kaanathavirikindradhainral, and the manam vandu, the adimanathinodanana, and the inai payadu erathivittadu. Once, mind vandu, and the truth consciousness, the supermind adimanathirke, adipanindhu thannithiravaaga, that passive instrumentaga, koraviaga sayalvadumboladu, in the, nammerkkuriyadu, and the unmayalallam, manam, uh, and the unmayalayadu darisikakodamindra bhavan kodikindral. Nam inga kaanakkoodiyadu, ignorance vandu, oru mukkamana karthu, enna kodikindral, bhavan enna kodikindral enral? Nambu olakathila pakkunna, ellamyavandu, nariyavushyamulapuriyadhulala, nariyapairadhugal eerpadikindradhade. Ellamy edhanilayana sayalvadagali eerpadikindradhade. Uh, ignorance tha karanam, ignorance na enna artavatthi, na avitthiya abdingradhade. And the orumaitanmay, inga muttilamaga, nambar vandu, oru naravadiyavadilai. And the ignorance avitthiya inbadu, ignorance of oneness. Verum, multiple cityla matru, and the perivillamathru, nambar mojikidru, orumaitanmayam ariyavadiyavadilai. Bhavan enna kodikindral enral? In the olakathil kaanakkoodiyay, in the nilay vandu, that is vandu, or a absolute falsehood ilai abdingradhara, romba or armiyana karthadu. Nambar olakathapathay, or a positive bhavan inga solik kodikindral. That is vandu, or a arudiyana nilay ilai, enra bhavan kodikindral. It is not an absolute falsehood abdingradhara. The poithothram vandu, or a arudiyana nilay kadayadu, it is only misrepresentation of the truth. Unmaiin oru maarabattu velipadu than, abdingradharavu. This vandu, unmaiin maarabattu velipadu, and the unmaiin, nambar sariyaa pathittam abdina, nambar in the lendu veliyavandrala, abdingradhar bhavan. In the ignorance vandu, edhanale eerpadikindradhainral, and the ariyamay vandu, adhanodaya arivel vandu, manam vandu, it is separated from his source of knowledge. Source of knowledge inbadu, supermind. Adhalirundhavandu, that is, pirindhavandu vandharkindradhade, adhanala than, in the ariyamay eerpattuladhade, eerpattuladhade. In the pirindhavandhuladu, and the ariyamayinadhal than, manathirkavandu, and the rigidity irukadu. Oru, oru vishetavandu, oru kettya podichkaradu. Uh, adheponrue, uh, oru edhanilayilirukka kodiyay, oru thoitramp. Itallan edhanale eerpadikindradhainral, manadinodaya, and the rigidity. Oru irukya, oru, uh, pokkinaladhan, itu eerpadikindradhade. Uh, it is vandu, eday eerpadathikindradhainral, and the manadinodaya, and the sayalbada, and the irukya, uh, nilay, manadinodaya, and the irukyas, irukhin nilayil kirukka kodiyay, and the sayalbada, oru muranbadukal eerpadikindradhade, it creates a conflict. Eday eerpad, conflicttho, oru muranbatta, nilayayadu thoitravikindradhade. Uh, enanral, in the olakam inbadu, sachchidanandaavin velipada, that namalakthariyam, that is than, and the prabhajathalavandu, thannithani velipaduthikodukindradhade. The sachchidanandaavin velipada, enra parkumboladu, adhal adipadaila enna, uh, edan adipadaila, and the sayalbada amindhulladhainral? Harmony, otthisayva. Adan perathan ellamy amindjerukkun, the olakam, and the prabhajam ellamy. Appadipattu oru otthisayvadan, amindha, in the amaypala vandu, edhanala, and the muranbadu namakvandu kaanapadikindradhainral, edu, edu, and the muranbadte thoitravikindradhainral? The manadinodaya, in the ariyamay, adan bolemaha eerpatta, and the rigidity, false rigidity, enra bhavan kodikindral. Adhanala, solution, enga, ep, enna prachinabdina, enna, enna, thiruvu ennavanral? Manam vandu, thannai, and the orumatraam seydu, adan meelnilayiluladu adimanathirke, thannai inakamaha vaitthukundu, thiravaaga vaitthukundu, orumatraam arandhal, and the rigidity paido. Rigidity pona, ellavadu, manapravlabu solvevaido, abdingradhar bhavan. This is the, and the olakathirke, bhavan, uh, bhavanam annayam, uh, alitha thiruvadu, ultimate solution, that is, matthabadi, ellasolution vandu, makeshift solutions tha. Innekrakira prachinayidha solvevaku. Anam bhavanam annayam, alitha, and the solutions, and the thirupal, and the thiruvu vandu, is the nilayanadu, that is, tha vandu, and the paadabattu, and the adimanaholiyay, and the poomaila vandu, erakinarakal. That is vandu, first vandu, mind tha openaho. First mind openaho, and the sayalvadagali nambar parkindru. Aparama, the whiteal openaho. Aparama, irudiyagathan, and the physical level vandu, namblakvandu, and the, and the, thakthi nam parkamudiyam. Irudiyagatha, morudhumaga, manam udal vaavu, ivay mondrami, in the adimanathir, adimanathinol thiruvurumatraam arayappattu, oru moru jeevanay nam parkamudiyam. Uh, in the mind of light, abdingradhade, already vandu, poomaila sayalvattil, uladhi enra, anney kodikindral. Merkkundayidhavu karthu na thavikla, leti paragraph eighteen, polanam.
Sir, we generally talk about the uh, preventing the supermind. Athavatho, it can be, the ignorance is a mind, separated from knowledge, from supermind. So, we have found out, our ignorance is the false rigidity. It creates all the problems.
Ama, yes. Yes.
But I will ask you. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
That is, ipo, ilukkondi, nambar, keekla, ippa, nambar, nambar enna sayinno? It is, ip, enna, life divine, itellamy, edukpadikorabdina? Ellamy practicala, vandu, sayalvaduthikadu, than bhavan neridhiyulari. This vandu, practicala life la play, panna kodiyay, oru, uh, oru, oru, knowledge thaadu. Ippa, nambar enna sayinno abdina, and the rigidity of mind, vandu, nambar, vandu, mind, vandu, appadumay, vandu, plasticarakkunadham, nambar bhavanu solikindral. Anneyam, palveer, avangalodaya, edhalavandu, enna solikindral, enral? Mind should be plastic to the truth, abdingradhana. Anan, nambar plasticarakradhukadayadu, that is, mind vandu, nambar, vandu, plasticavachikunno. Unmai kundu thiravaaga vaitthukollunno, that is, nambar nileyal, ippa, sayikodiyadu. Uh, ipparam, erkay, sayikodinile, mind vandu, nambar plasticavachikunno, unmai kuthiravaaga vaitthukullamindum. Uh, and the maarabattu karthukkalay, namme trukkulla kodiyay, manappanga vennum, enra bhavan kodikindral. Anney enna kodikindral enral? Uh, neengavandu, correctabdina, the opposition party is also equally right abdingradhara. Oru, oray karthukke, maarabattu karthukkunno erkko, and the maarabattu karthukkunno, sarithan, abdingradhana, anney. Uh, anan, nambar enna nanikrona, oru, nambar, oru karthayedukrona, oru modivayedukrona, that is, than, sariyandrananikindru. Uh, maarabattu karthi, namme trukkulla marikkindru. In the, idumariyana, itallan, vandu, nambar, namblala sayikodiyadu, itallan. Adimanam, manamraday manam vandu, supermentalize, uh, agathukunnaadi, at least, nambar manada vandu, preparepannalaa, idumari, nariyatips kuduthrana, mother and she are bindho, has given lot of tips. Eppidina vandu, mind vandu, nambar, vandu, uh, pakkovaduthanavandu, abdingradhake, eppidi, mind vandu, non-judgementalakunno. Ellahtli vandu, oru chakka, oru, oru opinion ochirukrona, oru judgment passkunnedru. Uh, eva rigidity, oru vishetavandu, nambar, vandu, romba kettya podichkada, than, correct abding, and saadikirunambar. The plasticity, itallan, vandu, edukabdina? Uh, it is, in the, manam vandu, and the adimanathirke, thiravaaga, irukka, iripatharkana, oru munnoor amaypugal, avada.
In the, in, in, the, the mind is the instrument of the supermind, uh, or the truth consciousness, right?
Ama.
Uh, and the, 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 in the physics la, vandu, and the uncertainty principle, and, and, that, uh, ni, oru, oru temperature measure pandrunna, measure pandumodhu, and the, and the, vandu, maridum, and the temperature, measure pandu, machine, and the, the instrument will also affect the temperature, abdino, solvanga. Uh, adumari, that is, the, 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 the mind, it needs to be a neutral, undisturbed interpreter or communicator, rather than introducing its own bias.
Ama, mind should be an instrument of so, supermind, ippa, abdikadayadu, ippa, vandu, mind is an instrument of, its own, its, its own, that, 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 amaypa arukadu. Anan, mind vandu, it should be an instrument, that is, solranga, and the, bhavan, pona chaparle solrukkaral, yeah, and the new instrumentation venno, sayalbada, manadinodaya, supermindodaya sayalvattirke, pudiyakarvi, am, pudiyakarvi amaypugal thayepadikindradhade, abding solirundharu. The pudiyakarvi amaypugal, ebbidiyavidina, mind vandu, and the adimanathin sayalvattirkaa, it should, it should be a new instrument for the, it should, it should subject itself to the, as an instrument for the operation of the supermind. That is, than, inga, that, ep, mudiyavadina, manam vandu, complete avandu, and the, and the, supermindak, vandu, subordinate pandikamvaradha, adipanindhu sayalvadumboladu, than, that is, mudiyam, otherwise, mudiyadu. Otherwise, manam vandu, and the, and the, vandu, vandu, nambar, bhavan sonnamari, ellanileyamay, and the, and the, oru korevattanileyil, than sayalvadum. That is, vandu, subordinate instrumentaga, adima, supermindi sayalvadumboladu, than, other, the, the defect free, the, the, peregalillam, sayalvadamudiyam, adhanala. Adhanala than, sir, ifo, kingdoms and goddess of little mindin, gottu, adiptha chaparay, not away, kingdoms and goddess of the greater mindin, oru, enra, enra, enra. Greater mind, ama, ama. Abdi, motherli, little mind, aparam, greater mindin, koddu. Greater mind, correct, correct. Liigala, adhanala than, yeah, sir. Ama, ama. Stage by stage, mail, waitindai, kodha. Ama, ama, correct. Paragraph eighteen, polama, sir, sundar, sir.
Yes, sir. Paragraph eighteen. The fundamental error of the mind is, then, this falls from self-knowledge, by which, the individual soul conceives of its individuality as a separate fact, instead of as a form of oneness, and makes itself the center of its own universe, instead of knowing itself as one concentration of the universal. From that original error, all its particular ignorances and limitations are contingent results. For viewing the flux of things only as it flows upon and through itself, it makes a limitation of being from which proceeds a limitation of consciousness and therefore of knowledge, a limitation of conscious force and will and therefore of power, a limitation of self-enjoyment and therefore of delight. It is conscious of things and knows them only as they present themselves to its individuality and therefore it falls into an ignorance of the rest and thereby into an erroneous conception even of that which it seems to know. For since all being is interdependent, the knowledge either of the whole or of the essence is necessary for the right knowledge of the part. Hence, there is an element of error in all human knowledge. Similarly, our will, ignorant of the rest of the all will, must fall into error of working and a greater or less degree of incapacity and impotence. The soul's self-delight and delight of things, ignoring the all bliss and by defect of will and knowledge, unable to master its world, must fall into incapacity of possessive delight and therefore into suffering. Self-ignorance is therefore the root of all the perversity of our existence and that perversity stands fortified in the self-limitation, the egoism, which is the form taken by that self-ignorance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Idilla, adipadaila, enna, fundamental error of the mind, abdingradhara. Fundamental error, abdingradhade, enna, abdina? Nambar patho, the third status of the supermind, apprehending consciousness, prajnana, idilla vandu, in the, one vandu, thannai, multiple centersla, neatikolikindradhade, extension into many. The palveer amaypugal, thannipattamaypugal, that is, amayuthikolikindradhade. The palveer amaypugalla, and the, there is concentration of the one, the oneness irukadu, concentration irukadu, ovor thannipattamaypugal, concentration irukadu. Anan, enna nadakindradhainral? The thannipattamaypugal vandu, than, vandu, thannipattamaypugal, enra, ninakindran. And the orumaitanmayin, kovippu, abdina, ninakama, thannipattamaypugal, enra, ninakindran. This is, vandu, the fundamental error of the mind, abdingradhara, actually, abdikadayadu, oneness, vandu, palveer pullikalavandu, thannodiyay, thannithani, uh, concentrate, intu, concentrate pandikolikindradhade, kovithukolikindradhade, thannodiyay, unaruvaneliyay, kovithukolikindradhade, oria, thannipattamaypugal kadayadu, anan, thannipattamaypugal vandu, and the multiple cityla, enna, ninakindradhainral, than, the palveervagana, thannipattu, onradan, onradu, sammanthapadaadu, thannipattamaypugal, enra, ninakindran. This is, vandu, fundamental error of the mind, abdingradhara, bhavan. Edhanala than, vandu, ellamy, adan, anithkumay, karanamaga, anith, uh, ignorance, ellavadumana, errors, itukellamy, this is, this is, vandu, adipadaya amigindradhainra, uh, bhavan kodikindral. Uh, a fulla, nambar, explanation, kulla, polanam.
Sir, na padikiduma?
Ah, pading, please.
The fall from self-knowledge is the fundamental error of the mind. By this fall, the individual soul conceives of its individuality as a separate fact, instead of as a form of oneness. It makes itself as the center of its own universe. It does not know itself as one, one concentration of the universal. This is the original error. From this, all its particular ignorances and limitations are contingent, that is independent, sorry, dependent, results. It views the flowing out of things upon and through itself and it makes a limitation of being. From this limitation of being, proceeds limitation of consciousness and therefore the limitation of knowledge. It makes a limitation of conscious force and will and therefore the limitation of power. It makes a limitation of self-enjoyment and therefore the limitation of delight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, madam. Thank you. The fundamental error of the mind is, then, this fall from self-knowledge, by which the individual soul conceives of its individuality as a separate fact, instead of as a form of oneness and makes itself the center of its own universe, instead of knowing itself as one concentration of the universal. The fall from self-knowledge, abdingradhade, self-knowledge, abdingradhade, the oneness, that is, self-knowledge, it's, it's, it is a part of one, abdingradhade. Adhalirundhavandu, virdhivittadu, the fall from self-knowledge. That is, vandu, adipadai, pereyendra bhavan kodikindral, manadinodaya, manadinodaya, adipadai, pereyaka, that is, karanamindra, bhavan kodikindral. In the, in the, edhanala, enna eerpadikindradhainral, in the individual soul, thannipattanamakal vandu, evaar thannai, pha, thannai unarikindranenral? And the individuality, and the thannipattu, thannithanmay inbadu, or a separate fact. Anan, that is, vandu, or a form of oneness, that orumaitanmayin, oru neatikappattan nilay inbadu, that is, unarvadilai? That is, thannith, thannai, thannipattavadiyavangalaga, than, avay unarikindran. Ovvanram, thannai, in the prabhajathin mayyamaha karthikindran. Anan, enna unmai, that, that, vandu, prabhajathinodaya, mayyamaha karthikindran. Anan, unmai ennavanral, ovvanram, ovvanrim, prabhajam, thannai kovithulladu, that is, than, unmai, it, it, it makes itself as a center of its universe, its own universe. It does not know itself as one concentration of the universe. And the, universe, than, vandu, ovor thaniyamaypugalilum, thannai kovithulladu. Anan, ivay evaar ninakindranenral? Than than, and the prabhajathil mayyam, enra, ennakindran. This is, vandu, adipadai, pereyendra bhavan kodikindral. Idhirundhavandu, than, in the, uh, oru, kooripitta, uh, ariyamayana thoitrangal, uh, adhepola, the limitations, limitations, enral, oru vadiyavangalukul, thannai uppaduthikolvadu. Itallamy, edhanala than, eerpadikindranen, enra, bhavan kodikindral. Idallan enna eerpadikindradhainral? Sachchidanandaanandha, vandu, anithkumay, adipadai, uh, the olakam inbadu, sachchidanandaavin velipada, that is, than, unmai. Anan, itta thannipattan, the thoitrangal, vandu, enna, evaar unarikindranenral? Sachchidanandaavada amshangalayum, that variyarekul, than, avay, anubhavikindran. Enna nadakindradhainral, inga? Uh, in the existence, vah, abdingradhade, existence, consciousness, bliss. This is, vandu, sachchidananda, sachchit ananda. This, this is, vandu, sachchidanandaavinodaya, adipadai amshangal. Ivay, maundrami, vandu, uh, oru ellikku, uppadadavay. Anan, this, enna sayikindradhade? Ovor, ovor amshathim, avathellni, thannadu ellikku uppaduthikindradhade. In the sat, in the existence, that is, vandu, oru ellikku uppaduthikindradhade. Aduvar, ellikku uppaduthu, uppaduthu, that is, vandu, enna nadakindradhainral? And the unaruvanelayum, uh, oru ellikku, uppaduthappadikindradhade. Adhanala, oru, and the arivum, vandu, oru ellikku, ellikku, ellikku uppaduthappadikindradhade. Adheponrue, in the chitsakti, that is, vandu, vandu, anantamana, the ellikku uppadadu. This thannipattavadiyavangal, and the chitsakti, um, oru ellikku, uppaduthikindran, oru vadiyavatukul, uppaduthikindran. Chitsakti, and the sangalpam, that ellathimay, vandu, oru vaadi, oru ellikku uppaduthikindran. Adhanala, enna nadakindradhainral? There is a limitation of power, yeah, limitation urvaagindradhade, enra, bhavan kodikindral. Enanra, nam sachchidanandaavinamshangal, than, enra, na marivu? Anan, sachchidanandaavada, and the amshangalay, nam unaravadiyavadilai, nam vandu, oru limited beinga, than, nam unarikindrum, nambal. Yeah, nam limited beinga, unarikindram, enra, enra, kana, karantithi, than, bhavan, inga, vilakikindral. Sachchidanandaavin ovor amshangalayum, nam, enna sayikindrum, enral? In the thannipattanamavadiyavangal, oru ellikku, uppaduthikindran, abdingradhara. It makes a limitation of conscious force, chitsakti, sangalpam. Adhanala, vandu, oru sakthik, uppattha, than, namdai sakthi, sayalvadikindradhade. Adheponrue, in the anandathayum, nam oru ellikku uppaduthikindru. Anan, that is, nam anandathenamal, pooranamaga, anubhavikamudivadilai. Italladu essence, enna solikindral, enral? And the sachchidanandaavikoda, thannipattavadiyavangal, oru ellikku uppaduthi, that is, unaru, unaru, unarvadhal, and the, and the, anantamana, poorananeliyay, avayavaygalal, unaravadiyavadilai, enra, bhavan kodikindral. Adhutha, partik, polama?
Padikiduma, sir?
Ah, padig.
Yaro doubt keekambo, okay?
Yaro, yaro padikiringo?
Na padikiduma, sir? Mangai?
Ah, ah, pading, pading.
The individual soul is conscious of things and knows them only as they present themselves to its individuality. It thereby ignores the rest. Also, it conceives erroneously, even of that it seems to know. All being is interdependent. Therefore, either the knowledge of the whole or the knowledge of the essence is essential for the right knowledge of the part. Hence, there is an element of error in human knowledge. Similarly, our will is ignorant of the rest of all will. Therefore, it must fall into error of working and a greater or lesser degree of incapacity and impotence. Our soul's self-delight and delight of things is ignorant of the all bliss. It is unable to master the world by the defect of will and knowledge. Therefore, it must fall into incapacity of its possession of delight and it falls into suffering. Self-ignorance is the root of all the perversity of our existence. This perversity is strengthened in the self-limitation, the egoism. Egoism is the form taken by that self-ignorance. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It is conscious of things and knows them only as they present themselves to its individuality and therefore it falls into ignorance of the rest and thereby into an erroneous conception even of that which it seems to know. For since all being is interdependent, the knowledge either of the whole or of the essence is necessary for the right knowledge of the part. This bhavan, vandu, romba, or a apadumana, oru karthay, solikindral. The thannipattavadiyavangal, enna sayikindradhainral? Than evaar unarikindranavo, oru vishyam, vandu, thannai evaar vandhadaikindranavo, avaraaga, than, that unarikindranay, enra, bhavan kodikindral. That is, the pooranamana, oru amaypaya, that unarvadilai, that is, vandu, oru vishetthi, vandu, thannai, vandu, oru vishyam, evaar vandhadaikindradu, avaraaga, than, that unarikindradu, oria, pooranamaga, that is, the pooranath, pooranaththay, that is, unarvadilai, enra, bhavan kodikindral. Adhalal, enna nadakindradhainral? Edayadu arundhirikindradu, adhimadu, vandu, tavaraha, arigindradhade, enra, bhavan kodikindral. Enanral, that is, pagathiyay maathiram, than, arigindradhade. Ingay, bhavan kodikodi, oru mukkamana karthu, enna, enral? Oru pagathiyana, oru vishetthi, nam, ah, sariyaga, thirindukollavendam, enralam kodha? And the pagathi, vandu, oru murumiyayi, saandhirikindradhade. And the murumiyayi, nam unaravidil, the pagathiyayi, nam, pagathiyayikoda, nam, sariyaga, purundukollamudiyadu. Abdingradhara, kap, abdingradhara, oru armiyana karthay, inga, bhavan kodikindral. The, either the knowledge of the whole or the knowledge of the essence is essential for the right knowledge of the part, abdingradhara. Oru pagathila, oru pagathiyayapathay, sariyapurunchukunna, nam kodha? Nam vandu, that, and the, oru murumiyayi, saandhirikadu, saandhirikindradhade, and the murumiyayinodaya, amshathayio, illa, and the, and the, saramshathayio, nam unandhrukkunno. We have to understand. If you do not know, we cannot understand. That is why, when we are... There is an element of error. Why? We are looking at all, looking at the walls of a wall. We are looking at it. We have to understand. That is why, all kinds of... The hearts of many, the hearts of many, it is happening. That is because of it, all kinds of, our Sangalpam, our Heart. That is what happens. Because of it, everyone has one, one Sangalpam, one Heart. That is why, we have to understand. This is... How much is happening? An incapacity and importance, this is happening. It is a silent, silent thing. Why? We have a narrow, we have an idea, we have a will. But there is a will for one, for one. We do not have time for it. Our will is ignorant of the rest of all-will. What is happening? An incapacity and importance is happening. That is because of this Ananda, we have to understand. We have to understand. We are at a limited level. But we cannot understand, because of it. What is happening? We have to understand. That is why, we have to understand. Self-ignorance. It is ignorant of the fact that it is a part of the one. That is why, self-ignorance. Self-ignorance is... The unity of the self, is not known. That is why, self-ignorance. That is the root of all perversity of our existence. Now, we are looking. We do not know the oneness. That is why, a country, a country, every day, a problem arises. Every country, what is happening? They are doing it in their country. That is why, we do not have time for others. Everything is, it is a country, that is what we think. That is why, we have to think about it. That is why, God asks for this. Self-ignorance, we are part of the one. If you do not think about it, in many bodies, we know. Self-ignorance is the root of all perversity of our existence. All kinds of, our lives, our dreams, it is the reason for it. It is not possible, whether you are growing up. The self-limitation, our body, our self-limitation, we have an idea. We have a family, this is self-limitations. Then, the ego, we have a family, egoism. The egoism, what is it? Egoism is a form taken by that self-ignorance. The self-ignorance, what is it? The egoism. We have a family, that is, that is, that is, that is. So, that is why, we have to see the self-ignorance. That is why, we have to see the self-ignorance.
A minimal thing is the customer...
Truth is seen only when all is known.
So, it is the second thing.
No, sir, Savitri.
The first thing is...
Other things are said, other things are said.
Ragharan, sir, Ragharan.
Okay, sir, say, sir.
Truth is seen only when all is known. That is why, Savitri is very important.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
All planes, after that, full truth is known.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Four or five, it is. Truth is seen only when all is known.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. That, God has said a lot. Perhaps, it may be so. Perhaps, it may be so. Why you do not say it certainly? Certainly, a story to tell, that is, on the super mental level. On the mind level, we can say certainty. That is why, God, perhaps, he says, this is Nirodhan. Perhaps, this is a condition, that is why, perhaps, it may be so. That is why, he says a story. That is why, he does not say it is true.
Nirodhan said.
Yes.
Do you have an answer? I have a mother, that is all. In the mind, the truth is there, that is the super mind.
Yes, yes.
Do you have an answer?
About that answer, you have a long time.
First sentence, that is the mother.
The next one, that is very important.
First, in the mind, that is, in the super mind, that is, that is. You have a long time, that is very important.
What are you saying? Now, another question, we are in the mind, we are in the mind. The mind cannot do this. We are in an incapacity, we are in a state of... That is why, the mother is saying. That is why, the mother is saying.
Sadhgita.
Yes. The mind, of course, can operate. The super mind, that is, it is good. But by media, what do you do? To begin with, you act through your psychic consciousness. That is, so that the psychic knowledge is certain.
Very important. That is why, I was talking about it.
Yes. Yes, it is, we will do it next. Now, we have a super mind. Psychic, you can go.
Very first sentence, the mind cannot read it.
Psychic information is correct.
Truth is seen only when ever. Thank you, sir, thank you.
That is why, the mother is saying. We will look at the details. It is very important, the mother is saying. The mind, it can interfere in...
Correct.
It is necessary to use it.
Very, very important, sir. First sentence, the mother is saying. The mind cannot do this. You are saying the next one. Now, in this stage, we cannot do anything. The super mind, you are there. Sadhgita, you can go. Of course, we have no time, we have two minutes.
We will talk about it. Other things, sir, thank you. Two minutes, we have to talk about it.
Another story, sir. When four Mahavakyas spoke, Rikhi Ajur Samadharva, the Veda comes. It is the first Mahavakyam, the first Upanishad. It is the Rikviadha. It is the practice of Brahma. That is the first Mahavakyam. God has a very, very important story. Here, we have, we have said three days ago. That is, it is, but now, it is time. That is, that is, too. The practice of Brahma, the name, the name of the name. The name of the name, we are there. The first, first Mahavakyam, that is very important, God has written. That is, of course, time is not, next time. Practice of Brahma.
Oh, okay, okay.
Practice of Brahma, the first, Aham Brahma, that is, that is. The Kattomasi, that is, that is. Then, Ayam Atma, Atma, the four Mahavakyas, the first, first, the first. The first Upanishad, God. The practice of Brahma, that is, we have heard. That is, you have comprehensive knowledge and apprehending knowledge. Three days ago. Very, very important. Of course, time is not, next time.
Okay, we will do it next. This session, we will finish. Next session, Sunday, we will do it.